I'm the president of the International Water Resources Association. And I'm delighted to have you all here with us today. Which this is our 50th anniversary year for the association. As and as part of our celebration, as you may have heard, we are announcing a new membership structure. We have announced this in our newsletter and on our website. And we're very excited today to launch this program and involve all of you in this new program, new membership structure. In line with our mission statement and our strategic plan, IWRA is a membership-focused professional association. And with that in mind, we've vastly expanded the offerings and the benefits that our memberships can enjoy. We've created new opportunities for professional development. We've generated new opportunities to exchange information on various aspects of the world's water resources. And we've developed new options for you to engage with the association and with other water professionals from around the world. With this new program, this new membership structure, we are reemphasizing and recommitting that you, our members, are at the core of this association. The session today is intended to provide you with information about our new program. And of course, many of your questions have actually already been answered in the FAQs for the structure, which you can find and review on the IWRA website. For this session, you will be able to submit questions through the Q and A box. We will not have the chat activated, but you can send questions through the Q and A. And we will endeavor to respond to every single questions that you may have. And I urge you to please stay through the end of the program. We have a special prize. I hope you appreciate it. For one of you, there'll be a raffle to receive this book on the Law of Transboundary Groundwater Resources, which I happen to be the author of. And I will be very pleased to send you a copy of this, if you'd like. I'm happy to sign it. But send you a free copy of this book. And we will have other of these types of raffles throughout the year and in other programs. But thank you for joining us today. Thank you for being part of this wonderful association. And I will now turn it over to my colleagues to present the details of the program.
Hello, everybody. And thank you for joining this town hall style meeting. It's keep things relaxed on this, the new membership structure. Wherever you're connecting from, I hope that you're well. And I hope that we'll have a very informative and a very enjoyable exchange today. This year, IWRA celebrates its 50 years as a membership-based association. And our purpose and strength has always been to be a platform by the members and for our members. And as Chair of the Membership Committee, it's a pleasure to see our community growing. And I'd like to say specific welcome and thank you to all members, old and new, for joining us today. I'd like to ask the Secretariat to please put up a slide that's been specially prepared for the town hall meeting. So the purpose of today's meeting is to explain and introduce to you an exciting new membership structure that shall take IWRA into the future. This new structure came into effect a few days ago, actually, and has effectively replaced the previous membership categories, which have been used at IWRA for the past decades, if not the last 50 years, with a very new and a dynamic way of interacting. It is the fruit of many years of reflection, listening to member feedback and involving multiple discussions and decisions amongst the entire executive board. But the whole approach boils down to one thing, and that's about, it's all about putting members at the heart of everything that we do. So let me start with a few words about why we did this. Firstly, it's a concrete response to IWRA's strategy, which was adopted in 2019, and which is aimed at putting members at the heart of everything that we do. Secondly, rapidly changing technologies and innovations and business models means that IWRA must adapt to stay ahead of the curve. And thirdly, we wanted to see that all of the work undertaken by IWRA either relates directly back to member benefits or to the long-term sustainability of the association. And we believe that the new structure does this. And so in the coming slides, let me explain this new structure. Okay, so this new structure focuses on how members interact with IWRA instead of who members are. For example, it will no longer matter if you're young, or if you're retired, or if you're from a developed country or not. This new structure focuses instead on levels of engagement. There will be still be different membership categories, but reflecting this new philosophy of engagement. So there will still be grants available for people with low income to become more engaged. And the membership will cater for both individuals and also for institutions or organizations. So for individuals, there will be three basic categories, ranging from bronze to silver to gold. The differences relate to the level of engagement, basically. So for example, bronze is a free level and can be renewed indefinitely. It gives access to those members on to information and the ability to join the various IWRA communities. If a member wishes to take a more active role and have opportunities to shape or lead or take part in the life of the association, then there is the silver category, which is a modest, very modest $65 per year. And finally, gold level membership will be for the highest levels of engagement. And will include special benefits for members who regularly attend IWRA events or who wish to exchange more closely with the association and be a part of the leadership of the association. I would like to specifically note that fellow and honorary member categories will still remain. There are also partner memberships, both silver and gold, which replaces the old institution and corporate, corporation membership levels. And I'll come to that in a little while. So here we have a slide that shows the different membership benefits. It's basically defined in two ways. The first way is by the level of interaction. And the second way is by engagement regarding the kind of content that we can have access to. So this table is quite detailed, and I'm sure this is available through the Secretariat. So I'm not going to go into all of the little detail, but I will try and highlight some examples. So for example, regarding interaction, the bronze membership being free, that gives access and ease of access to join, create profiles, to share amongst peers, and join task forces. The silver level enables members to promote more detailed profiles of themselves, including their activities, projects, and CVs. Enables those members to be able to shape the future of the association by being able to join IWRA's leadership teams and having the opportunity to propose projects. And the gold member interaction is focused on being able to have all of the above, or all of what I just said, plus a focus on face-to-face engagement as well as offering a premium experience. So regarding that second part, which is of the membership engagement, which is about the IWRA content. So the membership engagement levels progress from bronze, where members will have access to valuable, kind of open information produced by IWRA. For example, the annual reports, the newsletters, the policy briefs, and these kinds of things, to silver level with more premium content, such as proceedings and the full online version of Water International, as well as the possibility to propose topics for webinars or policy briefs. To the gold level members, with all of the previously mentioned access, but also an additional access to the leadership level information. So coming back now to the partner type organization. So remembering that this replaces the institutions and the corporate memberships. There are basically two levels that organizations can join at. That is the silver level, which is primarily aimed at smaller organizations who want to actively engage with IWRA and promote their activities to members. And the prices, I think they were mentioned above, that are at $550 per year. To the gold level, which is more for larger organizations. Organizations that want to actively engage at a wider scale and a more important scale with IWRA, promote their activities to members, especially at the Board of Congress. And this starts at $1,500 per year. In this table, you can see what I mean by different levels, differing levels of engagement. With, for example, both types of members being able to promote their own activities, being recognized with visibility into interaction. Both categories will also now be able to nominate individual members from their institutions or their own organizations. However, gold category partners will have additional levels of engagement, such as high-visibility advertising and preferential rates on stands or a space at the IWRA stand at our events. Now, regarding the IT platforms that support this new system, this slide gives us a glimpse of how it looks and how it feels, as well as the features that will now be available. As you can see, it's all about engagement with members, allowing us to interact in all manner of ways. So you can see that with through the library, you can have access to content such as Water International, policy briefs, and these kinds of things. There are discussion boards and ways of interacting with the thematic task forces and working groups. And there's also an app that you can download onto your phone to allow you to be completely mobile in your engagement with IWRA. So regarding the transition to this new system, the first thing I'd like to say is nobody, no member is worse off than they were before. Everybody is immediately in this new system in a better position with increased benefits. So here, I'd like to just make clear that student members will now become silver members until the end of their current membership period. There's no cost there. All other members will become gold members until the end of their current membership period. And then you have the possibility to choose which level of membership you wish to retain. I'd like to also note that all current institution and corporate members will automatically become gold partners. And so I'm almost to the end of the presentation now. This is the second last slide before we open up to questions. And this is to update you on the implementation. So a small reminder that this membership structure was approved by the executive board in July last year. And as of a few days ago, the system has entered into effect. You can see that many of the implementation milestones have been completed. The data transfer, registration, renewal forms have been updated. Profile features and discussion boards are available. Even the mobile app is now available. So we're now entering a phase where this is in effect. And the Secretariat shall now start to monitor and adapt as necessary to keep the association's activities and platforms running smoothly. And we welcome your feedback as we develop this together. And indeed, in September, the Secretariat will undertake a more structured evaluation of this system via a survey and evaluation with our members. So your feedback, whether it's good or whether it's bad, is very important because together, we're going to make this, this system, a system that's by the members and for the members. So finally, and I'd like to end the presentation by repeating that same mantra on about this new membership structure and platforms. It's all about having members at the heart of everything we do. And one way that we can start to really engage with each other in our own specific areas of interest with these thematic task forces, with these regional and national chapters. I very much encourage you to look into these. If you're interested in creating other ones, you can contact the Secretariat as well. Please get active. Please consider joining them. We're creating new ones. And I thank you very much for listening to me for the last few minutes. And I pass over now to our moderator to help us get stuck into the question time of the town hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. If I can take the floor. So I'm taking care of the Q and A today, and I see at the moment that we don't have any question in the Q and A box. So I can only assume that Tom's presentation was crystal clear and that you understood everything about our new structure. If there are still areas of doubt, you always have these FAQs, the frequently asked questions documents that we built for you guys. Should you have any questions about this new structure? If there are still some points that are unclear, it's the moment to ask your question in the Q and A box. Otherwise, please send us an email at office@iwra.org. And as well for any questions related to your personal situation or to your membership, if you don't understand what's showing up on the membership space, or if you have any other type of questions. Same here, drop us an email on office@iwra.org. Otherwise, maybe a few minor points about this transition. A few points, like we had to disable for the few members who had automated payments on their profile, we had to disable all of those, which means that you won't be automatically debited when the time comes for you to renew your membership. But you can renew this automated payment with just a few clicks by connecting to your profile and asking the membership space to remember your credit card details and enable the automated payment. Otherwise, do I, there is one question. Will there be a point where the new structure will be evaluated if it is working well? We have a question from Jan Offmann. Yes, actually, we are planning to first have like a close monitoring period. So in those first three months, we are trying to see if there are any glitches in the platform or if everything is just working well, and we will finish to implement all those new features on the membership platform. Otherwise, we are planning to send a big survey to the whole membership by the last quarter of 2021 to give everyone a bit of time to feel comfortable with the platform and with those new features. So a big survey should be sent, yeah, let's say, September, October 2021. And we were also thinking to maybe ask our members if they want to pursue a more in-depth conversation with us, going through the membership platform together, see what features they really like, see what they feel is still missing. For instance, in terms of functionalities on the membership space. So we are more than keen to have a deeper conversation with any of our members about what they need from us as a membership-based organization. I see there is a new question. So I have a question about the feasibility, like economic feasibility of this model. If I can say, well, we are a membership-based organization, but the main source of income of the association is actually not the membership because the numbers have been very unstable over the last few years. So actually, we can only improve in terms of incomes, our results with this new structure. And we are hoping that with more modest membership fees, we will actually attract, attract more members than with higher fees. And with this new structure, the fees are actually more reasonable than they used to be, although we are no longer using membership categories. So I think it's a win for everyone, for both the association, so we can attract more members and engage better with, with our members. And it's a win for our members as well, who can benefit from more attractive membership fees.
And if I can just jump here.
Please go ahead.
Alice, one of the things that we, that brought us to this new structure is the realizations that the world is changing around us. With the internet, with the ability to have email and to exchange in this new medium, the role of a membership association has had to evolve. We, as an associate, as a professional membership association, we have to look to our members to see what are their needs, what are they looking for, what, what do they want? How can we benefit them? And it's a different environment. And so this new structure is intended specifically to reach out to all the members and provide opportunities for everybody. So some of the things that we're doing, as Tom and Alice have mentioned, we have new task forces where members can engage on specific themes and topics. We have regional and national chapters. We have all sorts of, we have various research projects that are, that the association is involved with and is involving members. We have webinars, and we're always looking, not for people just to view the webinar, but to participate as experts on these webinars. We are now developing special, what we call master classes. And those will be rolled out in the next, in the next half year or so, where we will provide special training and workshop to the higher-level members in the association. We have online conferences that we've now developed. And there's so much more that we are developing every day, every week, with the idea that we want to provide our members new opportunities to exchange with each other, to meet new professionals from around the world and to share their experiences because that's the purpose, that's the mission of our association. And so this new platform, this new structure, we believe will achieve that in terms of the benefits that we provide the members and the space that we provide the members to engage in. What we hope with, as Alice was saying, we will be monitoring this process, we will be monitoring the whole system. We want your feedback. We want your engagement. We want you to tell us what is working and what is not working. And through that process, as Tom said, we will improve the system. And we will make this a platform and an association that's by the members and for the members. And I will add one more point on engagement. This is our third year of the current executive board's term. Our term will end at the end of this year. This year, we will have elections. We want members to engage in the election process. We have directors, we have committee members, and so on. And this is just another opportunity for all of you to become involved in this association, in the life of the association. And we want to see more of you active on all these different fronts. So, and I think you have some new questions that have been generated, Alice.
Yes, I see. We have a question from one of our members in Pakistan, who's keen to establish a university chapter. That is fantastic. We currently have a chapter in India, however, we would be very keen to establish a chapter in Pakistan. So Professor Shaw, please send us an email so we can discuss the topic in more depth. We also have a question from Lechha Whitmer. If I can read it, in terms of suggesting topics, why are you making a distinction between the groups? Should not everybody be able to flirt an idea regardless? Well, anyone can suggest topics, but only silver members will be able to take on leading roles at IWRA. So any member can join our task forces and chapters. However, someone needs to be a silver member if they want to take a leading role. By leading role, I mean having a role in the chapter bureau, for instance, which is the governing body of task forces. Just like someone needs to be a silver member as well to be a candidate, to be a board, executive board member. So that is the distinction. But anyone can just propose ideas and come up with a task force idea or a chapter's proposal as well.
Just to clarify, it's either silver or gold.
Silver or gold.
To be on the bureau, yeah.
Absolutely. We have a member from Mexico who would like to establish a link between the Mexican Association of Hydrologists. That's fantastic as well. Please drop us an email. We have strong links with Mexico, as well as we organized the previous World Water Congress in Cancun, Mexico. So as well, please drop us an email on office@iwra.org.
And I see maybe there's some more questions coming in, or?
There is one question that I can ask, which is about young researchers' activities and what we have planned for our younger members. And if you can just answer that one.
Tell, tell, please.
We currently have a task force for early career and young professionals that is currently developing its activities with a number of working groups. And among those working groups, we are currently developing a series of webinars, who is actually showcasing research work from young and early career professionals. We are also working on some specific communication campaigns and developing in the future some mentorship-oriented activities. So if you want to get involved with the young professional community at IWRA, that's where we are. So as well, drop us an email, and we would be more than happy to include you in this task force for early career and young professionals.
And just to give two examples of things that we've already done, I know the task force has had a webinar on careers in the Middle East. I can't remember exactly, for early career, young professionals. There was a, we had a special mentorship program for publications that is ongoing right now. We established a special committee to guide a very select group of applicants. We had 60, I think 60 applicants, they selected 11. And they are now mentoring them through publication of articles that will hopefully will be published in Water International in the next year or so. And we will be doing this same program, I think, starting again next year. We will open it up to submissions for applications for participation in these types of mentoring programs. So lots of opportunities.
Otherwise, if there is no other question, should I just announce who is the prize winner for the book? If I have your green light in this case, I'm very pleased to announce that the winner who will receive Professor Eckstein's last book is Ines Gasmi. So Ines, if you're on the call, congratulations. And we, the executive office will reach out to you this afternoon, I think, to establish the details so we can send you the book very soon. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ines.
All right. Well, congratulations, Ines, and thank you, Alice, and Tom, and everyone. And I really want to thank the executive office and Tom and the membership committee for months and months and months of work on developing this new structure and conceptualizing it and putting it together and exploring what other associations are doing and so on. This took a tremendous amount of work. And also, I should say, Alice and all of the work on transferring from the old system to the, to the new system. We really believe this is going to make a big impact on the members and the members' ability to become more engaged. We will have little bumps in the road. We expect that. But this is where we want you to let us know where the bumps are, what you think should be changed. We want your feedback on this. And again, as Tom said, we will be improving the system with your help and with... We want your feedback on this. And again, as Tom said, we will be make, we will be improving the system with your help and with your, with your support. So thank you all for participating, for engaging with us. We will have more town halls. We will have more opportunities for you to join us at our various events. And we very much look forward to having you participate and become engaged with this association.
I see no other question, Gabriel. So maybe I can
Okay.
that you have a few final words to wrap up this call.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Alice. And again, thank you to the staff and to Tom, to Tom's committee, membership committee for all their hard work. This is been a tremendous effort. And we greatly appreciate all the effort, all the work that has been put into it. But I really do want to thank all the members, for those of you who joined today and who are participating and becoming more engaged. As I said, we have opportunities to be, for you to be on task forces and chapters, projects, webinars, master classes and on the executive board. Well, we'll have a lecture later this year for the executive board. So we do want you to become engaged. This is your association. We want you to make it your association. Thank you for joining us today and we look forward to the next time.